We're starting to pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we see the motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by a million. All right, we all have a consent agenda, so moving on to old business consideration, multipurpose building. I think everybody in the room knows it's gonna require a bond issue. There's been some interest in the community to maybe try to get something going, possibly, maybe. So what's everybody's thoughts, concerns? We need to kinda discuss it now because if this is something that the board wants to do, then it needs to be got on like ASAP. As far as language. All right, cheers.
Hey, did you, um, I know we have a video link, is that something we want to show?
Yeah. One more slide.
Yeah, I'm sure.
For Eldon. Take a second.
Maybe I'm not.
Also, you guys wanna take a look at, there's a handout they just gave you, I just got printed five minutes ago, came in about 5:30, that's from Mammoth. Um, I'll tell you this before I get up there because you can be a little bit longer there. They took the scope of what our Cardinal Foundation came up with for an eighteen thousand square foot building. They took it down to thirteen thousand four hundred. They took out the single lane running track. The restrooms are on the exterior, we would have to check that with code, whether that would be allowed or not. They do have some bleachers shown there, that's not included in the cost. It would be storm rated, it would have a sprinkler. You would have to have HVAC, obviously. And that sprinkler, initially I thought it was a panel fire marshal, but it does include that in that cost, so these are very rough, is what he told me, I talked to him about ten minutes before you guys walked in, kinda, I just got it like at about 5:20 or somewhere around there. And they were working on that, so that red number down there is, that's where they're thinking that he can get it in there. They're doing all those cutbacks to try to get to that number, which is four point three million dollars, basically.
Do we have the weight room backed out because that's something, because the equipment we're just planning on moving over?
Yes.
Assuming these are steps going into the restroom that are located on the outer edge?
They have steps in there right now, David, I saw.
That's not handicap accessible?
Nope, but I, I don't know if those are really final plans either, I think they roughed them out pretty quick.
Now, that, that's one thing that bothers me is we have no plans, we, we're still kinda shooting in the dark.
That's an issue, I think part of the problem is that in order to get plans, you can bid a bunch of money to do it, uh, so it's kinda a catch twenty-two when it comes to that. I was thinking those plans are gonna cost fifteen?
Yeah.
Fifteen thousand? Do you know about the basketball court? Cause it has the turf area included in the price. Coach Duke was talking about that, um, the floor may be something that they would be able to support otherwise, or put it, or pay for it through the money he's raising, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, all of that would be off of whatever that price is. Whatever you paid for out from, you know, if you had somebody that said, "I'll pay for the hardwood floor," that would come out of that, four point three.
Yeah, I was just curious if this cost included the hardwood floor?
Yeah, that cost includes everything. Anything you take away is cost you're taking off there.
Just to take away, as I told you, is what they've taken, so.
Well, all they mentioned here is the turf, that's what I asked.
Are we sure we want to do bleachers, only on one side if we're planning on having tournaments and everything in there?
I don't think you.
The bleachers aren't included, are they?
No, I don't.
They're not, it's just strictly practice.
Well, some of the conversation in the last meeting was in order to have multiple tournaments going on at once, one in high school gym, one in.
But there's room for bleachers if bleachers were brought in, right? That's what it looks like?
That's. If we, it's maybe bleachers on both sides.
But you can have tournaments.
We gotta break out a certain way, like the red areas are gonna be.
Kaylin and Andy. It's not, but there's not bleachers. Did you have the bigger version of the bleachers?
Yeah, I mean, I think the discussion was, and I think it's smart to have portable bleachers that you would roll in and around, so I think that would, uh, they're not included, that would be something.
Well, I'm afraid we're, we've got some money things up in the air.
Kaylin, do you want, do, do you understand this, how they got broke out?
Andy and I, um, sat in a meeting with Blaze from Mammoth today as well. Um, I was a little late to it, um, so if, I mean, Andy would be able to answer all the questions, or to the best of our understanding.
Yeah, we've got, Blaze had several answers to several questions you guys are asking each other. If you want, we can.
Yeah.
Discuss it.
Let's go for it.
Yeah. Dr. Rob, could you actually bring up the bid on your computer, please?
They have it in front of me.
Well, yeah, it'd be a lot bigger. So, uh, the blue on your picture.
I wanna see that.
Yeah, well, if you can start with the picture first. The blue is the thirty feet they reduced to get to that four point three number. They were trying to get to a reasonable price that we could afford. It did take out some of the turf area, and this where you see what looks like bleachers is actually turf, so the turf is from here to here. Uh, they just took out this and this, and that's the walking path around it for a little bit of a track. Um, that's where you're losing that. He did put the restrooms on the exterior to save space inside the building. He also said we could save several dollars, um, by, they have four stalls in the women's, one's handicap, three others, two seams, uh, two urinals and two stalls in the men's. He's, he doesn't see why, since it's only gonna be ten to fifty people in there at a time, why one or two stalls isn't more than enough in a restroom, instead of spending a bunch of money because you're not having a thousand people, four hundred people in there, anything like that. They have a mezzanine above the weight room, um, and then if you look at the prices that he's got.
That's better than trying to put classes on like this.
All right, so one of the questions was the basketball court, the cost of it, all that stuff is included in the indoor athletic facility line at the three point six. He said, if you look at it, you can, the weight room equipment, he's got two hundred and fifty thousand, they just had people on their team put together what it might cost to do this stuff. We don't need any weight room equipment. Coach Duke is moving what we currently have into this facility, so you can go ahead and take two hundred and fifty thousand off of, well, down here where it's four point three. Uh, the mezzanine is over three hundred thousand, it wouldn't necessarily have to be done immediately. You know, maybe Ag can do it, maybe a local construction company can do it, you know, later down the road, that would save you three hundred thousand. Parking lot, uh, the guy that does that part for him, he didn't realize we're building this right next to a parking lot. You're correct about, you know, the steps going up, it's not ADA, they just gave a rough drawing, he realizes there's gonna have to be some kinda sidewalk, something handicap accessible to get in there. One of the last things he told us are we dead set on a wood basketball floor. He says you can save a lot of dollars by putting in the Sport Tech floor. Uh, assume you played on Sport Techs this weekend?
I don't know what that was, it was like a tiled floor that they, uh, that kinda comes in section, and they, it's like a floating floor.
It's a floating floor, you already got the concrete base, it's the floating floor that you put on top, uh, it, you could put multiple courts on it, volleyball, basketball, whatever on them, playing multiple sports. He says you can save a lot of money right there by doing that. He says if somebody's just dead set on having a wood floor, which is fine if they are, he said you can also save a lot of money, you don't have to air condition the building. And I think everybody's always thought, well, if you got a wood floor, you're gonna have to air condition, you know, for the floor, for summertime humidity, things like that to control that. He said, schools for years have not been air conditioned and they've always had a wood basketball floor. When was our school built? Fifty-six, and they didn't get air conditioning in the high school gymnasium until like two thousand and two or four? So, you know, you could have a wood floor in this building without air conditioning necessarily, you just have to control the humidity in the summertime. So, and he said that would be a savings of roughly, we're, uh, four to five hundred thousand.
The floor would be the savings?
No, no, air, no air, no air conditioning. You're still gonna have to heat the place, you know, but no air conditioning would save you roughly four to five hundred thousand. He says if we had to, he says we can get this place down to three point six. Uh, I think, just, if we can get it down to three point six, and with the generous donation of that three hundred, and then if the Cardinal Foundation can come up with three hundred, I think you can get that thirty feet back into your building. And reduce a couple of these things, you're getting rid of the weight rooms, uh, the mezzanine, you not, won't necessarily need, uh, you know, the decision on the basketball floor needs to be made down the road, how much money we have, you know?
The mezzanine also might be something, construction treaty, something like an Ag project, it's all wood.
Didn't you find, didn't you find out that that's what Eldon did?
I did, they made a small one.
Yeah, but they're, they're, uh, Ags.
He did a lot of the walls, they did the sidewalk.
So you might, you might save some money.
Probably.
Places like that, you know, I, yeah.
Materials add to the weight.
I haven't seen anything on any exterior lighting. For some, this is gonna be used, the bathrooms are gonna be used for football games, there's a dark factor across that parking lot of a night.
Well, I would, I would, it's not, there's no final plans, but I would assume, um, the buildings that he showed us, they put up, they put up, uh, hundred million dollar projects on universities, uh, I would assume that they plan on putting lights around the exterior for security.
Well, I'm not talking about the exterior, I'm talking about from bleachers or the grandstands to this facility.
Don't we have lights?
We have, we have lights that light up the parking lot every night.
Yeah. I think there are, for sure.
But you're right, Dave, probably would need some additional lighting in some spots, for sure.
Well, the, the game, football field lights.
I don't think it'd be a lot.
They're, they're on when people would be trying to use it, cause there's a game going on, so.
Well, they're gonna be using it throughout the game.
Yeah, he's saying with the stadium lights, you get a lot.
With the stadium lights that are on.
It's not all that bright in behind there, because I've sat up there on, on the hill and watched the football game and watched people stumbling around after they were going to their car.
Really?
Now, whether that's from darkness or alcohol, I don't know. Not my concern, but this is.
You guys wanna see the video?
Do you have any other questions on what Blaze said? Blaze also said, he gave us his phone number, we can call him right now, if you all want to, if you have questions directly for him. He said he'll make himself available at any time to come meet with you all, to give you any other information. Uh, he realized this is not super detailed, but when there was rumors of five point two million for this project, he was not happy because he said that wasn't representing him or his company very well for just throwing out an arbitrary number. Uh, that was like saying, oh, well Derek, you do basketball fours, what would it cost for you to, your company? Craig, you, you do HVAC, what would it cost for your company? So they took a bunch of high numbered bids to throw together to give us a number up front. And he, he really, I mean, they're trying to sell us, they want our, our business, but he re, he really thinks he can get this down to a reasonable number that we can work with.
That is the number.
The number that I originally remember from the architect, when they first brought this up, was, it was in the four point eight, eight million. But then, that's why I was hard on Coach Duke the other night, you know, there's not enough details here. I mean, they're coming in, they were coming in at three point two million, and that's not enough, I mean, that's not enough to get, I wanna do this once, I don't want them come, you know, anybody coming back in two or three years and saying, "Well, you know, we should've done this, and we should've done that." We're gonna do it right, or we ain't done it. My vote.
Well, I mean, we're not, this is kind of a.
I know this is preliminary, but.
Yeah.
You know, we've got.
They were, they were very, they were very nice to, to spend two and a half, three hours today to get us these numbers, uh, to get things started. This isn't, he says this isn't how they typically do business. We say we wanna do a project, they give us a drawing, we look at it, and then we work on the numbers afterwards, not throw some numbers out first and then decide, "Well, I want this, and I don't want that," you know?
Coach, where'd it from? Kansas.
I did have a question about the, getting us down, uh, eliminating that spot, if they're running turf all the way up to the basketball court, did they talk about, cause we did talk about portable seating down the road, I, I don't know how that works with turf.
You could put it right on top of the turf. Yeah. Cause it's just like the, the wings, the way that they fold up, they kinda like fold up so you can tip it over and then roll it out a door. Yeah.
I just didn't know that hurt the turf, but, you know, I'm not familiar with that.
So do we plan on trying to have this set up so we can use it like for tournaments, or is it just gonna be practice only? I'm kinda.
I think from the get-go, the original group wanted an extra practice facilities.
What would you like to see?
Well, I don't know, I mean, I've heard several different things, you know, we could gen, maybe generate a little bit forward or back from it, you know, by hosting tournaments, I, I don't know enough about that stuff. You know, somebody that.
You can't.
Uh, you can?
You can't, yeah, I mean, we were.
You can't?
No.
Okay.
You lose money on officials.
On official, yeah, but.
You'll, you know, you host another tournament.
I think it's talking summer camp, maybe. Well, it's like summer camps, you know, I, I don't know, I'm just thinking.
Your sports team can make a thousand bucks, yeah.
So in our best interest, it's not to set it up for.
It's not gonna be for profit.
No.
Yeah, but I don't think for profit. A lot of people coming back to me later.
Justify it.
If this goes through and say, "How the hell didn't you all do this, and why didn't you all do that? And why did you build it like this?" I mean, I can't tell about the elementary gym, and I wasn't on the board then, so.
Me too.
Well, when you think about the elementary gym, there's nothing you can do with that now. So I think as long as you build and plan for potential growth there, lay the foundation of what you need, that you could, you know, add to.
You can't get everything right the first time.
From a surface level or a finishing perspective, I think.
Use this. Do we?
Okay.
Do we want, I mean, I know we said no with HVAC, is that gonna be, I mean, I know.
There's HVAC planned in this.
Okay.
But that's a cost that could be taken.
That is a cost that could help reduce maybe the total number.
Can be done later if possible?
It could, he says, H, the AC could be added later, you're gonna have to have heating.
Cool.
But the AC can be added later, wood floor can be added later, extra bathrooms can be added later.
And as far as hosting a tournament or having teams, I mean, we just, I just got back from a place that had eight courts in one big room, that were all temporary built, so I mean, you could have, I mean, theoretically a tournament where you have a game going on over in the main gym, and then another game over in the other gym.
Boys Basketball went to the basketball camp at Florida State this year, they played on these temporary courts, and there was high level AAU teams and really high level high school basketball teams that were playing on them, so, you know.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we saw the number one recruit in the nation play, and that game was broadcast on ESPN.
And it's not like you're providing a disservice to them by making a play on that instead of the wood floor, because the best kid in the nation's playing on it, it's good enough for anybody else, right?
Well, the best kid in the nation had to play on the wood floor, and they had to hold those, so.
Yeah, but.
But it would kinda also be better for maintenance and like resurfacing, I mean, you wouldn't have to pay for that in the future, that'd be one thing, cause we don't know what it's gonna cost to maintain and keep it.
Correct.
Going utilities.
I mean, you, you should know, you just recer, or just resell the floor, the basketball floor, uh, Sam, how much was that? Six thousand, seven thousand or four?
The big end, yeah, it's like ten, ten something total, both of them.
Yeah, so you're looking at six or eight thousand if you did this for every summer, well, if you put in a Sport Tech floor, you don't have that cost every summer.
So it's one and done, you don't have, there's no, there's no real maintenance to?
Correct.
Just replace like this angle.
And what's the replacement cost then, in ten years down the road, or something wrong with it?
What's like?
What's the replacement cost for the gymnasium floor down the road?
What do they look like, longevity on those?
I'm not in that business.
Oh, they've been out for quite a while, um, I mean, I'd say they've been around twenty years now?
Yeah.
Do they last for a term?
I don't think so, I would say they have some wear on them. I would say it's probably pretty similar to a wood floor.
But if you get it.
In your, in your lifetime last of it. I would, I would say it's probably pretty similar to a wood floor, how long it'll last.
I'd say you're probably a fourth of the cost of a wood floor upfront. Just an estimate from some preliminary numbers that we heard, and so if you gotta do it every ten years, replace them, which I don't think it would be that quick, uh, you know, that's four floors in the amount of time a wood floor's there. And look how many times in that wood floor you're gonna have to redo every year, every summer. So, there's some more cost savings.
I'm sure products, I'm sure these things come in and out of the market, but they had, where we were at, they, they said it took, you know, five or six people, about an hour to put the floor down, so I would assume that if you had a problem, it, it's not one continuous piece, you could come in and repair sections, kinda like, uh, well, like in here with the carpet.
Uh, would you still wanna see this video?
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's always good, I, I went down and visited with Matt Davis, Superintendent Eldon, this is their completed facility, it was a little over a million dollars, he did say he wouldn't be able to build it now for that, probably getting closer to mid million five or so, but he was able to take some, uh, some, uh, shortcuts, but it looked, came out nice. It's about fourteen thousand four hundred square feet. It's all metal on the outside, two-tone. It sits right on their campus, they already had the parking lot there, there's that one big garage door, they opened that up because it is, you'll see it in a minute, has the, uh, vent fans on the back wall there, it's got the turf padding, with the padding was really nice, a little spongy, didn't feel like you were walking on concrete at all. There you got your batting cages, they've got some steel cables up there, the kids did this on the side of the walls, they put all that up out of their Ag department. It does not have air conditioning, but when he cut that on, felt pretty good, it wasn't, it felt like he had a breeze through the whole thing, so it wasn't too bad, and it was probably eighty-five, ninety degrees that day. Um, I didn't feel like I was stuffed here sweating bullets when I was in there. So we just kinda walked around the building, I think they have that little mezzanine up there, they got a little storage, uh, right there, that is what they use for heat, kinda like what you'd see in the shop, he said it only gets at the highest to about fifty-five degrees in there with those two, it's not like a full system, HVAC system, but fifty-five is pretty good for a workout.
You mean it's when it's really cold, it can get up to fifty-five?
Right, they, they heat it up to fifty-five. They kinda had this little area, they, they had attachments for the, the chip buildings of the wall there for your base wall netting, they had a little electric and cleaning room, just kinda just out of, you know, press board or something. One restroom, that's the only restroom in the whole facility, the only water fountain. Pretty simple, pretty stereotyped. He said electric and water would easily accessible, but right there on the corner of the building, he said, "So that's saving a lot of money with our Morla," if you put it, and the thing about putting it where the Morla property is, there's probably some hook-ins right there, you just need to pay attention to where you would put a building like that. There's twenty-four feet between each of those columns, and that, they are insulated, they put those boards up to kinda prevent insulation from getting torn up. He said it's just an indoor practice facility, pretty basic, but serves their needs.
Well, just three exit, walkout exit doors, is that really OSHA approved?
He did get that approved, he did get that approved with the, uh, um, fire marshal because they're not having more than a hundred people in there, that's what he told me, he had to go by, local city code, talk to him about that. There's no sprinkler in this building. And I went and saw their weight rooms, uh, what they had done, were comparable, so, but you guys might wanna see some of these things they've done, they're, they're a neighbor, so I went ahead and took advantage of it, what they're doing out at the football stadium, just kinda honoring a lot of their past athletes. Got their records out there, they really did a good job on their stadium, these tables are donor tables, twenty-five hundred dollar donor tables that sit out there, they got a place on there, and there're veterans out there as well, it's kinda cool, and to get their name on there, somebody sponsors it. That's the middle school wrestling room, you can have some weights in there, but I thought it was just kinda interesting, Matt was really good to me and took me around, probably spent almost an hour just kinda looking around the facilities and looking through the spots, so. Yeah, that's going on around here. Then I also sent you that information on Moberly's eighteen thousand square foot building house, but we won't have to look at that, you can look at that yourself, that was a six point two million dollar building, quite a bit in that one, but it is a metal building too.
How did, who built, well, who built that building for him?
I have to get it from him, I've got a list, uh, and then I sent you his pricing list, it's like down here.
Which one, Eldon? Harlem's every.
He built each little piece out.
How'd they get away with Harlem building that bottom package?
They did.
Same way I think Eldon Hoover did his concrete. Just straight out did it. They're building them all over.
Well, I say you have more questions on what Blaze and Mammoth had.
Just to give you guys some financials on that, break it down quick.
I mean, I know you're still, you know, uh, we don't have a definite number for you, but they don't, they don't either.
I have some definite numbers about how much you have to work with, so.
That may, that may help or hurt one or the other, but.
Getting a general idea of what this costs, you could bond with no tax increase, about four million dollars. You see where you are. You've got three hundred thousand from Fisher, the community's committed to another three hundred thousand, that's your bottom number. Now, those are rough numbers, there's gonna be some wiggle in there, but David wrote some good points about lights.
My understanding from Blaze was that these rough numbers were rough to the high side, is what he said.
Correct.
He did not wanna quote us something that was gonna be more, he'd rather give us a higher bid now, and then it comes lower at the end.
Isn't this right, Kaylin, this was towards the end, he said his boss said if all we had is three point whatever to work with, they'll get us something, you know? We may not have a basketball floor, we may not have a weight room or something, but they, they can get you down to a number that we need. We just gotta figure out the ones and the needs and. We just gotta figure out the wants and the needs and.
And I'd be with David. If we're gonna do it, do it once and do it right. And if you're gonna ask for the money, ask for what you really need.
There also has to be a for sure plan at least before, if it goes on the ballot, it has to be in black and white. This is what we're asking for the support core. Or else people just won't support it because they don't know what the support.
You can just throw a number out there. It could be as high as five million or it could be lower than three point two.
Well, once we know how much we're gonna bond, then.
Yeah. What it meant to just say.
One, if we do a four point.
Caleb, you had the, the money discussion last week with him, uh, about the fifteen thousand for his work.
Yeah, um, basically, so they, they needed us to commit to fifteen thousand dollars, uh, for the Cardinal Foundation to take care of that, to finish up the design work. Um, so we went ahead and agreed to do that. You know, pending a, a bond issue, uh, passing her, you guys, okay, a bond issue. Uh, what Blaze spoke about with us, uh, was, you know, we're, we're gonna get these preliminary numbers and here's where we're at. But it's really just to know what he's working with. So if it's something that, and I'm just gonna throw numbers out, I'm not trying to, but if, if the, if the board was comfortable with a three point five million dollar bond issue and we were comfortable saying we have that three hundred and get another three hundred. And we'd be looking at a four point one million dollar project, right? Then we would come together, roll up our sleeves and really get a good design out there, which they're already working on. To then be able to sell to the, and say, this is exactly what we are going to do with this money. Right? And then it's up to the voting public to decide if that is gonna be a good use of the bonding money that we have. So where, where he's coming from is he's, we're kind of working through this backwards. We're trying to, uh, they're usually coming through and say, alright, we're gonna know exactly how much we have to spend. And we're gonna design a building to this, and we're gonna let you know exactly what we can do. But right now, we're trying to have him tell us how much it's gonna cost before, before we bond. So that's what he's looking for. And basically, the, the gist that I've gotten is, you know, we're gonna, they'll be able to get us something. As soon as they know and they'll be able to build something for us. Uh, and it might, might take some concessions. And, and, and to your point, yeah, we wanna get it done right. We wanna get it done right the first time. But does that mean we're never gonna do anything? Because we're never gonna be able to get it done right the first time?
No, I'm just not.
You know, I, I, I know, I understand.
I don't wanna run into this half-assed. I mean, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it right.
I don't think anybody wants that.
Well, there's, things happen. And once you get a plan.
You can't plan for COVID and the skyrocket prices, so.
So do I understand correctly, Caleb, that the Cardinal Foundation is willing to put forth the fifteen thousand or whatever dollar amount?
We've already agreed to that. Yeah, I'm sorry to cut you off, actually, but yeah, we've already agreed to that.
So then the school is not out any upfront money to put to get that plan to get it on the ballot?
On the design? No, that, that's, if it was a fifteen thousand dollars, it's what the agreement read, um, whenever I read the agreement. To get a design plan in place. And with the presentation and three D rendering and, and everything for us to present to the public.
So putting it on the ballot does not cost the school anything upfront?
Costs a thousand, it will cost them about six thousand dollars at least to put it on the ballot.
It's gotta go on the ballot for, in three counties.
That's the total, that's the total for the last one. And then we'll have to, yeah, thanks, Craig. We'll have to run it through the attorney, so probably another fifteen hundred there, so it might be seven, eight thousand dollars.
Amy, before you run off, I do have, just on understanding correctly. I'm gonna take, you said that you could do away with the mezzanine?
Yeah.
And the.
Well, you can go ahead. You can take the two hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, remind me, tell me again how we're gonna reclaim this stuff that's in green that they showed.
By take the two, take the two fifty off for weight room equipment. And then you got three hundred thousand if you choose not to do a mezzanine. So you've saved over five hundred thousand there. And, uh, he was gonna reduce restrooms a little bit if possible. He's not promising that you can get away with that.
Right.
But Eldon proved one toilet is good enough. I don't know that, Jason, do you think we'll have more than a hundred people in here very often?
I think you did.
One on one, you'd be okay.
Yeah. T R A games?
Yeah, I don't think there's more than a hundred people there for T R A on Saturday.
Yeah, so, you know.
That's not the only use that those restrooms are gonna get.
Depending on if they're built inside or outside, correct?
Right.
That hasn't been decided for sure.
I don't know that it's for sure been decided that these are being built for football game for five nights out of the year.
That was part of the deal was because the restrooms that are there by the concessions are nasty and nobody wants to use them. That was part of the reason that these restrooms are going in up there.
Luckily, luckily there, I think there's a group of community members that are trying to fix those up for you guys.
Would the Cardinal Group still be supportive of a building like Eldon's? With some modifications?
I don't know that we could speak and answer that question, but I, I believe there'd be at least one man in here that would not. He'd probably be disappointed there's not another basketball court that's like.
No, I'm talking with a basketball court, but maybe not have all turf throughout the whole building. Have a basketball court, have partial turf, have your weight facility on one end of your building.
I mean, I guess it's possible. I don't know if their building's big enough for all that.
Just asking.
It, it can, uh, yeah, I don't know.
You're looking at one point five million, four point five million. And you said yourself, something's better than nothing.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I thought the mezzanine was for, that Coach Duke wanted that for storage. Because of the buildings up there behind the old ag building. Are terrible shape. He didn't want anybody going there other than himself. So we take away the mezzanine, that's taking away some of the storage.
You'd still be gaining some storage in the field house by removing weight room and a few other things out of there.
So Coach, if we remove the weights out of the field houses, I gotta open up the door for the wrestlers to have a spot to put their mats and leave them?
We wouldn't put them there. They would have a gym space.
They would have a gym space where they could put their mats?
The elementary gym or the new, the new facility. We would not put them in. I would, it would not be my choice to put them in that room. Whenever we have three usable gyms, the elementary gym's not really big enough to use for basketball. If we have that one to use for basketball and we have the elementary gym that's not really usable for basketball, my choice would be wrestling goes to elementary gym, which is way bigger than a forty by forty mat.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, you know, we're talking, yeah. They're in the cafeteria, have to load their mats every night. You know, they're practicing every night. I'd like to see this. Don't take me wrong, I don't wanna see this just for basketball. I wanna see a game, everybody.
Yeah.
So if they're, we can get a spot for wrestlers, you know.
Basketball's a small piece. Wrestling's the biggest piece. It's been thirty years since this school added wrestling and no one's did anything about it for thirty years.
And frankly, it's, it's pretty disgusting that they practice in the cafeteria and the kids eat in there the next morning.
I'm the basketball coach, but I mean, the reality of it is, you've had thirty years to play in and nobody playing for it.
Well, it is time to start.
Exactly, exactly.
And that's what.
Well, they did build that building on the weight room for wrestling.
They didn't build big enough for a forty by forty.
That's what they had to punch for. They didn't mess it up.
They wrestled in there. It was not big enough.
No, I, I get it. It was better than nothing, yeah.
And so now there's a group that's trying to help improve things that haven't been improved in the last thirty, forty, sixty years.
So do you, do you have any numbers on? Just the body capacity numbers that you got?
Craig, did you have another question?
No, I was just, I just wanted to be sure I understood how we could reclaim that area back. It's gotta be in thirteen, four hundred, maybe try to get back to sixteen.
Eldon's was fourteen, nineteen, fifteen.
Eldon's was fourteen four.
And Eldon's, you said Dr. Rob was short, right? It was only like fourteen foot sidewalls?
Yeah, it wasn't real tall.
Yeah.
It was, it was real close to reading.
So you couldn't, you couldn't shoot it to a teenager?
I kept looking at it thinking what a baseball bat force shot would look if some kid winged it.
It was close.
What is our minimum height for a basketball court?
There's no standard minimum, but typically you don't see anything less than twenty feet on sidewalls. Lincoln's is about, Lincoln's old high school gym, they just built a new one, but Lincoln's old high school gym is about the shortest sidewalls I've seen. It's gotta be right at twenty.
So going off of like, I, I didn't play basketball. Don't, nobody throw a foot attack. Back now, I didn't have the coordination to sling them, so I was out. Do we like, for safety of the kids, do we have interior walls where they're playing and practicing, you know, basketball? Do we need padding? Is that stuff?
They, they play, they play, this company, this is what they do for a living.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and they, no, that's a fair question. They plan for stuff like that.
But it'll just be directly underneath the goal.
Yeah.
Like it, you know, like our high school gym now, we have the nice full wall mat.
Yeah.
Cause it looks nice and it's nicer to have. It's safe. It's more safe than just having a standard sixteen feet. But standard sixteen feet's what a lot of schools do.
I don't want Bob in there trying to sling them and hurt himself.
And I don't think you can push, like Eldon did all that wood around there to get.
Do they have a, have they set a design on what their in, in, interior walls, it's just gonna be steel or is it?
I, we don't know. They are still cranking stuff out as we speak. He's, these guys worked hard today to get us this.
Oh, fair enough.
Not, yes.
You know.
We'd like to know too.
I guess one question I got, are we dead set that we need to go, and I'm not trying to kick you on the shores. We dead set, we need to go with mammoth or is it something we can throw a bid to and do like Eldon has? Zimmerman throw steel up and then we go at the floor with? Who's your, who's your superintendent?
The general.
Who's your general contractor?
Sounds like Superintendent Eldon did. Is that right? Did Matt?
He did.
I mean, I've seen Harv Zimmerman's buildings, there's, I mean, there's not a lot to them. Throw the steel up and.
It's there.
They're all div built.
Oh, of course.
Derek, I would agree with you. I think you could probably find local contractors that could throw down the concrete. And throw the building up and do it for cheaper than what this company's concrete and building is gonna be. I, I think you are definitely right, but they also figure in everything else for us. The turf, the basketball goals, how to hang them from the steel that's there. We're not then trying to find another company to hang goals and be like, well, I wouldn't have done it like this, you know?
Yeah.
This company does it from the ground up, uh, the whole process.
And all the promotional stuff too, correct?
Correct. But that's not a bad route to go to get a comparison.
Promotions, definitely.
Like, um, somebody has a public, an executive that's really hard. And also, I mean, they're talking about a, a general contractor and a superintendent may have done it. But that is somebody's full-time job. And if you're building something like that, there are ten thousand phone calls that will have to happen. Somebody has to be on site to make sure that everything's coordinated with the concrete. I mean, it's, it's not something for someone to volunteer to or for the superintendent to or, you know what I mean?
I'm not a general contractor and I don't play one on TV.
And Matt Davis has a little bit of background.
He does.
Yeah, I think there is some value to, I mean, I, I get the idea of like exploring. People that can come in and do this, but there's a lot of value to hiring, just kind of what you said earlier. You wanted to do it right. This is the company that specializes in this.
Everything has to coordinate. And that's what they would be the ones doing instead of us or somebody else trying to do it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I appreciate you, but.
So we need to, if you want, Dr. Rob, you have Blaze's number correct?
I talked to him twice today, yeah.
Yeah, so you guys, he said, get a hold of him anytime and he'll help.
So I guess we just need to come up with a dollar amount. To put on the bond issue, to put in front of voters and see if there's some that the community's interested in.
Well, I think, I think we're still way too far out on plans. I mean, we're gonna have to have a little offense to what the guys have already done, but in order to get the voters to even look at this twice. There's gonna have to be concrete plans. This is gonna be in there, that's gonna be in there.
That information would be provided before November, the whatever that date is.
Plus, I don't.
They're not doing.
Already paid a fifteen thousand dollar.
They're not doing this unless we agree to put it on the ballot. They're gonna X-nay and stop the process if you guys don't agree to put this on the ballot.
Okay, so I'm gonna rewind a little bit here. You guys have to choose a design firm. You should probably advertise for who you want to use. It's okay, it's mammoth, but we should probably post it if you wanna do that. That's one decision you have to make. Are we working with mammoth? Cause you already got a district architect. It's fine if you don't use him. But at some point you need to advertise and decide as board who you wanna work with. It could be mammoth because they're here knocking at our door.
So we had to pay for the district architect and mammoth architect?
No, you choose one or the other. If, if you look at your construction design delivery methods, they're right there. Can I go see that? They would be your, uh, construction manager of this. Right, we're gonna be talking to our lawyers about this stuff. So they're gonna come in, they're gonna assume all of this, they're gonna design this thing, they're gonna do it in-house and give you the final price and all the things they're kindly doing right now. And they have all the, the contractors they like to work with and it's just gonna kind of head forward. They're gonna tell you what the price is. Plus it'll be kind of a turnkey type deal.
So their numbers, their number, are we not gonna take the gamble on?
No.
Price change or nothing like that is?
No, we get them under contract is what happens is they finally meet the final finals. It's kind of what we did with the big project up here. Basically, this is how much it is and unfortunately we, we took so many times to pass the thing, went through that inflationary rise and we didn't have them under contract yet. Cause they were still getting the flux of inflation and COVID and everything else going on. When they finally gave us the price, it was a lot more.
Well, that's why I wanna make sure, you know, this is gonna be a, so if you put an R F P out.
Be an R F.
Whatever.
Qualifications.
Your guy's gonna have to do that without you paying fifteen thousand. Is that right? Cause he's gonna submit for bid? Or is he not gonna submit a bid? Or he's gonna have to walk this?
You, you wouldn't give a bid. At this point, you can say, we have the qualifications. They respond to your, it's like most of the job. Say if you want a design firm, it could be Insight, it could be them, it could be anybody. You say, you look at them off, you interview them if you want to, you choose one.
And then that person puts it out for?
And then that design firm, which you do, works all those bids and tries to get it at the cost that they, you know, you guys can pay. So if it's three point six million dollars, it's like the, what they're.
But those fees are gonna come out of that three point six. You're gonna start to eat away at that pretty quick.
Yeah, you're gonna start that, so contractors. So the big question is, is what is the board comfortable with asking the community for bondage? How much? And that's why I told you all, go, probably better ask for all the money you can get and not the bond all the way. You just have permission to, four million, then you only do three. We just kinda issue them as we need it, you know? Doesn't have to be all the ones we want it to be. So, uh, but if you don't get all the money you need to get this project done, if you're going through one project and watching how many different things change underneath your feet. That's what Dave's saying, as things come up. It's like, you better have something to work with in your wallet. Don't put a six flag in Silver Dollar City with twenty bucks, you're not gonna make it, you know? I'll still say that. Have enough in your, in your bank that you've got something to work with because you're gonna get community needs, you're gonna get people who wanna see those portable bleachers, you're gonna get, you know, hey, we don't really want those rollout basketball courts. We want the ones that come down, we want to lift them up if we want to, you know, things change. So this board decides what that final, like Dave was saying, what it finally looks like and what he puts his name on and say, hey, I helped build this. I'll still say that, have enough in your, in your bank that you've got something to work with, cause you're gonna get community needs, you're gonna get people who wanna see those portable bleachers, you're gonna get, you know, hey, we don't really want those rollout basketball courts, we want the ones that come down, we want to lift them up if we want to, you know, things change, so this board decides what that final, like Dave was saying, what it finally looks like, and what he puts his name on and say, hey, I helped build this, cause I wanna be right, right?
Did he talk about sidewalk light with you guys?
Yeah, I think originally he was talking like at twenty-two.
The timeframe is, send the law, it's five years. It's five years, but they don't recommend it, they like you do it within about three, you start carrying that money, and you start building interest on it, which is kind of nice, but you're not really supposed to go get a loan for money and then earn money off money you borrowed, it's not, it's round one, you could get five years, if you're waiting for Iowa, wait five years, you know, we would engage whoever you guys choose to work with, and then start moving forward and listen to this group on what they're wanting to see, what you guys wanna see, getting that final design put together and going for it. It's hard, is that they said earlier, this is kind of coming backwards, cause we're listening to the community instead of just coming with our own projects and the voters, we're listening to what the community says they wanna do, and I've heard it since I've been here, I need basketball, and some more space for wrestling, you know, these things, they're out, so, that's what the community's saying to you, and you guys decide as board how you wanna respond to that.
So do we need to?
You can direct me, if you want to, this Star Trek, I will, I'll start the RFQ.
Yeah, it's all clear, we got three gyms.
We'll let them respond, during a few weeks, August fourteenth.
So those two, you wanna work with it or?
No. Also, if you're wanting this on as an issue, how much you wanna bond for, I have to know now, or I have to start talking to the lawyers, the top of the administration advisor, and say, we gotta get that language together, cause that has to be approved on August fourteenth, of course, to turn it in by twenty-seventh, it's impolishing sometimes to do it fourteen, or what you want it to say, that's to be on November's ballot. And also advise you, a lot of, a lot of school districts, and this is all the way back to my beginning, in admin classes, they don't put it on a presidential election, but you know what, maybe that helps us, having more voters come out and weigh in, cause our voting has gone down fifty years, it's about halfway it used to be, it used to have well over a thousand people voting, now we're lucky to have six hundred.
What's our percentage, do you know what our percentage would be of the mood table?
It's the same.
Same, that's your last two shots at it, for fifty-seven point one four, which we're good, but the difficult piece is what Dave's talking about with the details, you know, people wanna know that stuff, wanna know what we're getting at, and what are we committed to, to go all the way back to when, you know, people told me that the elementary gym should have been a full-size gym, right? So they felt like that project got shortchanged, they're still here about it, I don't have all the details, other than I found the plans of it not long ago, but you don't want to overpromise and underdeliver on a project.
Exactly.
You wanna say these four or five things, they're in there, will you vote for them or not?
Yes, great.
Well, if we're gonna put a bond issue out there for them to vote on, we definitely gotta make damn sure that we're asking for enough money, I mean, we don't want to say, okay, we think we can trim everything down, and we can get down to three point six million, no, no, we ain't doing that, I'm not doing that, I'll say that, I'm saying we, Miss Joyce Swerves, but we're gonna ask for money, then by damn, we're going for money, do it right, do it one time, none of this half-ass shit.
Make it okay.
Would you serve on, make it, that's great.
We have another four million we could ask for, but no tax increase, that will max us out for a while, until our assessed valuation goes up. Newsflash, our assessed valuation did not go up this last time, it's about the same, sitting there about sixty million, we get fifteen percent of that, that's how they calculate that, fifteen percent of your total assessed valuation is how much you can give that, so you've got about four million, about four point two.
Now, if I'm, if I'm understanding, understanding that right, if we ask for, say, four point five million just to cover any of what happens, we don't have to?
You can't go four. You don't have four point five, you can go four.
Okay.
Four.
Okay.
You'd have to ask for tax, tax, tax increase to get to.
Right.
But, where we were going with that was, if we ask for four and we only.
You're wrong about that.
Yes.
Kind of, I mean, just.
We're only using what we need, we don't have.
Because we have, because we have refinanced a lot of our stuff over the years, we've saved this community quarter million dollars in interest since one seventeen, and because we've got down lower rates now, and we paid a lot, a lot of stuff off, cause we've been able to catch up on it, we can use the same levy that we use for our debt to pay off another four million without raising our debt service, but we are limited by law, fifteen percent of our total assessed valuation is all we can give debt, so that's about eight million dollars roughly, so we got four million dollars we can still burn, think of it like a credit card that has a limit, that's the limit, to get another four million we can go into, but that'll max you out for a while, so what you have to ask yourself is, do we have HVAC to replace, would I say no? Do we have windows to replace, would I say no? Bob? Do we have a bunch of people moving in, a bunch of people moving in that are gonna, we've got a bunch of section eight housing, or a new company moving in to bring a bunch of people in, got influx of kids, not that I'm aware of, new businesses moving in, not really, we're pretty stable for the last fifteen years, I'm just giving you perspective, we have no major maintenance or projects that you know need to be done just to keep school, then you can think about a project like this, figure out what it's gonna be, but then you have to wait till your assessed valuation creeps up some more, because at some point you're gonna have some maintenance, twenty twenty-seven, we probably need to look at our roof and see if we need to use some resealing, is it a million dollars, is it two hundred fifty thousand dollars, don't know.
But my point was like, she was asking out what there is. If we go for the four million and we only use three point five, then we're gonna look bid, and we don't have to use that other half a million dollars.
What you can do is you can write in the bonding labels to use it for this facility or other projects, maintenance projects in the district, which could be the restrooms over at the fieldhouse.
That would be what, that would be what we'd wanna do, just to provide some flexibility, um, depending upon, cause these are still rough costs, and like Jason said, they're estimated on the high end, so.
And it'd be as explicit or as general as you want to, but let everybody know on the front end what that budget is, this is absolutely gonna happen, so.
Yeah, I think that when you kind of just step back and think about it, the question you need to ask, well, I think what we found out is that you can build a building, um, you can get a, an athletic facility, um, the question is, uh, do you, do you want that or not?
Right, and the voters are gonna make that decision.
Well, that's one thing I wanted to mention earlier too, is that, um, you know, I mean, that's what, we're elected to represent, we've had enough people approach us to say, I would like to see this, um, facility, and I, I don't think it would be appropriate for us to say, no, we're not gonna do that, we're not gonna represent, you, or at least provide the option for people to, to vote.
Where you, where you been hanging out, dang, please, I've been hanging out.
Well, I'm hanging out.
I'm just, I'm just, uh.
Well, I'm, I'm not.
I'm, I'm getting, yeah, it's up to the voter, so it's, I mean, I'm approached, and they're going, no, 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 but, you know, eventually up to the voters.
Yeah, and, and those same people. And those same people can put no on the ballot, and then at the end of the day, we're where we should be.
They're out there. Yeah, I mean.
You know, I mean, we're, we're what the rep, we're what the community wanted, I think the problem is, when we say, oh, I'm hearing somebody who's saying, no, this shouldn't be on the ballot, we don't offer an opportunity for the people that wanna say yes, to vote yes.
That's, that's fine and good, I mean, we, it, it will be eventually decided by the voter, I mean, there's, no matter what we agree or disagree on here, it will be decided by the voters.
Yeah, I think ultimately that was kind of what my point was.
Okay.
Was that, um.
Wrong same thing.
I think it's appropriate to put it in front of the voters for them to decide, that was kind of what I said, but I didn't do it very well.
No, no, you're fine.
I didn't want to injure you and I.
Or at least what I was trying to say, didn't do it very well.
Yeah, Kelly, Kelly, I think asked, or David did one about making the, the decision, if you all decide to put this on the ballot, would you all be willing to make a committee of two, three people, and then since the Cardinal Foundation is raising money, let them have two or three people out of their group and form a committee of the two parties to narrow this down? You can't be asking sixty, eighty, hundred people in the community, well, what do you wanna see, what do you wanna see, I think between two or three of you all and two or three on the Cardinal Foundation, if you can get those together, that group of people know what the community wants, and I think you can meet with the company you decide, Mammoth or whoever, would you all be willing to agree to that, to let the Cardinal Foundation have some say in the building? The finishes or whatever you choose to pick inside the company, whatever?
Well, I'm gonna be supervising the job, if it passes, I'm gonna be up there when they break ground and right through till they hang the last door.
He's retired.
I'm retired, so I can be right there.
I can't, taken for the word, but I think it would be a good idea to have a steering committee, you know, to kind of.
I think you guys have a lot to start with, so I feel like they should get some input.
I mean, board's gonna have the final say, but you can't even swing it, you know, if everything goes right, but I think, you know, everybody with their, is in doubt, if you're battling, you ought to get a chance.
Yeah, I think that's the way we've kind of approached some other projects in the past, we've had a little feedback that, um, you know, basically we've taken into consideration, and kind of put that all together between what everyone wants, what the costs are, and then make that as a recommendation that we vote on, it's the final project that we're kind of shooting for, so I, I would say, yeah, I mean, it.
All right, so, I mean, you guys will have to make that final decision, it's your ultimate big pot that we're playing with, you know, but I think if the Cardinal Foundation's willing to find some money, they ought to have a little bit of input in helping some of the decision-making.
I don't think a steering committee with community members on it's a bad thing.
No, I don't either.
Okay, fine. Do we need to mo, make a motion to approve that part of it, or?
For a steering committee?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
We do need to make a motion for the RFQ.
Yeah.
So, um, I'll move to.
Issue an RF.
Issue an RFQ for design of the facility.
So we got a motion, Bubba, seconded by Ashley, everybody in favor? Seven oh eighty.
We also made a motion to draft bond language and what amount, and I'll have that big guest to approve, so you're gonna give me directions to engage your municipal advisor on the air to draft bond language, for how much, come on, the bond, how much, the coupon, how much?
Four million dollars.
Is that a motion?
And a motion.
Okay, second?
So we got a motion with David.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Amanda, Kelly.
Yep.
Ashley. David.
Yes.
Bo.
Yes.
Amanda.
Yes.
Derek.
Yes.
Myself, yes, uh.
That'll be on the agenda on, uh, August, you'll see the final bonding language, and we'll approve that, we'll turn it in.
Don't small, too big, boys.
And we did say.
For November, correct, for November?
And we did say we concluded that extra language for flexibility.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's, I'll work it.
Do we, I, 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 I just don't, do we want that extra language? If you, because I think he gets a bag.
You have extra money.
That's why I went through the four. But you don't wanna promise something you're gonna do, and you don't have money, and they, well, I voted for bathrooms too.
Well, that's what I'm worried about, I mean, I think trust in our community is, we want this facility.
Cause this place, they have bathrooms anyway, right?
Can we say it can just be used for other projects?
I mean, this one here, we're going for this plan, right?
Yeah.
Or just say, oh, maintenance project, if you do that money off your.
If you get four million, you got six hundred thousand, you're gonna have to do it.
Well, I guess.
Kerry, Kayla, you got a question here?
I'm, I'm, and I'm sorry, I, I guess, I guess my, my question, what I would, what I, some information that I would like to pass on, because we're, we're gonna, and thank you, but we're gonna move on, and we're gonna tell Mammoth on our end that they're gonna debt fifteen thousand, so they're gonna, they're gonna start the, their, their side, and I know you guys have your RFQ, but this is something that the, the foundation is doing on our end, right? But I guess my, my main question is, when we talk to them, is, and a four million dollar bond issue is great, what are you, what are you comfortable actually with that bonding money, what, what are you wanting us to, to go to? Are we wanting to look at maybe trying to see what we can get away with, what they can provide us with, with a, uh, three point six million dollars from that, and six hundred thousand dollars from the Fisher money and the foundation, are you looking at, well, let's see what they can do at the three point two, cause if we tell them four, and then four six with the additional money that we're kind of spending, thinking about, they're gonna get there, right, they're gonna get there, so, I mean, are you wanting to throw in a contingency of twenty percent?
I mean, just have them come up with like, three different phases, kind of what you're talking about.
Like the three different prices.
With air, without air.
Okay.
With the thirty, or the, the full one, fourteen four.
Okay, okay.
I mean, you're, you're on the right track.
Well, I mean, cause I just don't wanna, I mean, whenever we talk to Coach Duke.
If it comes under four million on ours, and then you got the six hundred, that's bonus, right, so then.
Well, we wanna spend that, I mean, that's what we're.
We got that.
Yeah.
But then like Dr. Robb said, if we have, if we use your six, six hundred, and then we have room to work on concessions.
Do some, or bathrooms or.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I.
Parking lot, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, if we're bonding for four, then we should be prepared to spend four, right? So I think.
But I'm, I'm just afraid with them getting, knowing how much you're gonna spend, that's when the bid's coming in.
Right.
I'd say you just let them just trade for.
It's why it's good, we got three numbers up front, to kind of.
Yeah, so.
Well, I just, I, I, you guys are being good stewards of the district's money, and we want to be a, a partner with that too, so that's why I just, I didn't wanna go tell them, woo-hoo, we got it, we got it, let's make it as pretty as possible no matter what, and, and I just wanted to make sure we're, we're, we're comfortable, we'll just kind of talk to them, talk to Blaze about.
Give some different options.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's good, because I think if we said, hey, we've got four, uh, that we bond for, and then we may have an extra six hundred, this is kind of the money we're working for, can you give us some options on how we get up to that, or what we get if we stay below the, you know, something.
Now, your people are still gonna commit, right?
Three hundred?
That's where we're working towards.
Okay, I'm just saying, if we're gonna go four million, we were kind of promised it would be three hundred from Fisher and three hundred from the foundation, I hate for them to say, oh, we don't need it now, so.
That's, yeah, that's, that's, that's a fair concern, and I don't think, I think we're, and, and I will say, the Cardinal Foundation is not a single purpose entity.
No, I got it.
Either.
Should be for activities.
It's not, it's not something that we are, that we are creating this foundation for a construction of a multi-purpose facility, it's for, it's gonna be hopefully something that goes on in perpetuity for the benefit of Tipton students and activities.
If it's done right, I want my picture on the wall too.
Your name will be.
So moving on to new business, now that we got Ted taking care of, I don't know why this is on here, but anyways, bus parked.
I know why it's on there. Those buses being parked up there, crossing off Dean Gibson's lot, and I talked to, as soon as I saw them, and I was, I've had more actions over them, buses being parked there like that, even though it was school property, there was many people in the community that didn't like it at all, even though they weren't, didn't have anything to do with parking anything up there, and when I approached Durham, said, hey, you need to move those buses, they don't need to be parked like that, they said, we can't, we gotta call our boss, and I said, will you call your boss, and he's got a problem with it, you tell him to call me, left on my phone line. When I saw them the next day, they said, no, he said, we can't move them unless Dr. Robb tells us to move them. So it took forever to get that moved.
So, so what's the issue?
Well, I think that was not very nice, to park the buses across there blocking that off.
Well, I don't think it was done intentionally, cause they had a banner on the one, trying to.
Well, originally, the banner bus was setting kind of on the grass or in, on down low part, there were, the rest of you could go around it, but number ten was pulled way out from the fence, not anywhere near where it was parked now.
I don't have any idea, when I went, I was headed northeast.
You could have set a scooter between them, I mean.
I mean, you couldn't walk between them.
And I'm just saying, I don't really care about that. And I'm just saying, I don't care about parking, but it looked weird.
It did look like they were out of place. Kinda like the one up here by San Marius. Looks like.
It's like they just got out and left.
Yeah, it looks like it just wrecked in the.
I, I talked to the general manager, Dave, before yesterday, and just kinda asked him about that, and he said, how, how, when I left for vacation, I said, that's not where that bus was. Can you tell me how it got over there? Cause when I came back off vacation, it's right where you said it was, Dave. And he said, uh, well, you know, we wanted to, we're trying to get this last bus driver hired, so I, I moved it over there to get some of that traffic coming from Jeff City, and I said, yeah, probably don't need to park there. Can you move it, and I already changed it before that, so just kinda keep it in the center, like where you had it before. So, he said, fine.
Well, the number ten bus.
Yeah, it's moved to.
From orig, yeah, they did move down, and where it's parked at now is fine for me.
Yeah.
And the original banner bus was kinda sitting on that.
Right.
Island, I call it.
That's where I told them to put it.
And that was fine and good, but when I, after I talked to them the first time about moving that number ten bus, then all of a sudden, it's pulled up and nosed up toward number ten where you couldn't hardly walk between them.
What's our agreement with their parking there?
We provide space for them. We're getting about a hundred thousand dollars over five years.
Couldn't remember what that was, but space, space for them to park, but not advertise?
Well, they can advertise too, I think, for our drivers. We want them to be drivers.
How many buses?
Well, I mean.
Yeah, how many, how many buses are we gonna have to house?
It looks like.
How many buses are we gonna have to house? Five, six, seven, ten?
Number, I blanked out.
I think it needs to be.
I think they're gonna have, they told me four on the hill. If you look at that graphic again, I, I was able to finally get a superimposed image of that and see those little yellow squares. That's where they're gonna park them right there. So, the whole lane there is gonna be open. Um, I know, uh, Mr. Gibson needs to access his pole right there, so probably gonna have to pull from either side from his property there, and still pull out through ours. That shouldn't be a problem.
It's, I, I mean, it seems like if we're offering, if we're offering a place for them to park, it just seems like we can, they can be adults and park in a proper manner, doesn't block our neighbors.
Over that area. I mean, let's, feels like we're, this is just silly.
It's childish and stupid, so I think they could.
I don't think that was the intent, Bo, after talking with their chairman, but I think he was just trying to make sure his sign was, and that was it.
Well, it's.
Their sign could have been seen where it was set.
I don't disagree with you. I didn't tell him to change it.
The other bus that was present in the problem did not have a sign on it.
No, number two.
It was just.
And it could have been backed up to where it is now, but it wasn't.
It looked like me trying to park a bus.
Yeah.
I had to, yeah, that's not good.
So, what's the solution? So, we can be good to our neighbors. Do we need to rock that so they can back in there out of the way?
Can I address this?
Go ahead, Dean.
Yes, sir, he's here. For twenty-five years, starting in nineteen ninety-eight is when I bought that building up there. In nineteen ninety-eight, I went to the school board in a setting very much like this, and I said, folks, I wanna be a good neighbor. And for twenty-five years, I have rocked that whole parking lot all the way around the administration building and, and all that there. The only thing I didn't do is when Chris Holm tore the old building down. Uh, I did bring him some rock up there, but, uh, but, uh, he had paid for all that. But until then, I, I've done this on my own dime, and I did it because I wanna support my local school. Uh, I don't wanna do it for, for any other reason than that. Now, when, when they parked the buses there, I realized, now I've got, I've got a semi truck that has to park there to our, to our electric pole. The trailer does stick out on the school property. I know that that has caused some conflict, because I've heard it come around to me in the, in the community. Uh, that, that ones of you have, have said that very thing. Uh, I know that, that, uh, you've been irritated that, uh, some of the, the trucks off the highway parked there. Uh, Dr. Rob, I have you on video camera at six thirty-four Friday morning, walking your dog in your little funny outfit, and you took a picture of, of a tan truck there at six thirty-four in the morning.
Yeah.
Uh, and I don't have no clue who he is, but I was up there starting a conference call at six AM. He pulled it off the highway. I told him, you can't, we'd rather you didn't park here. He said he'd need to go to the restroom over to Casey's. He did that. He left right after you crossed the road with your puppy. Uh, so I, I realized that that really bothers you to have, have trucks in there.
It does?
Well, I've been told that, and I don't know whether that's true or not, but, uh, but that's, and I just assumed it did, because you took a picture of it.
I didn't know who was parking up there, so we were gonna have to contact those people.
Right, I, I understand that. I'm not, and I'm not making.
I got cleared out for those buses. I gotta know who's parking.
I understand that. I'm not making accusations or anything, but, but here's what I did the other day. I went through there and, uh, I would suggest, I put some, you might have seen some green flags along through there, where that, that grass is. I would suggest that we peel that, that, uh, topsoil off there, or at least the grass off there, the sod off there, and I will do this for you and re-rock that, and then you can park buses right up to the highway. Uh, and you have plenty of room to park buses in there, and maybe your, your, your maintenance staff can go behind it, things like that. It would, it would almost triple your parking up there. If you, uh, if you did the, the calculations and look at what it did. Uh, I would do that, and David, you came by my office.
Yep.
And, and we talked about that, and, and, uh, and that's why the flags are up there. David, you asked me not to do anything until this board meeting. Cause you said the board should make the decision whether we're gonna pull that grass out, re-rock that. Uh, Mr. Rob, you, uh, you told me on the telephone, uh, that Durham had, had a special aggregate they wanted on the ground when we first talked.
No, that was, that was my proposal to the board.
That was your proposal to the board. Okay, well, I misunderstood. I thought that was Durham had that, so I just need to know what kind of.
I knew they would be up there and tearing it up, so.
Pardon me?
I knew they would be up there and they're tearing it up.
Well, just tell me what you want there, and, and if you want me to do this, I'll be glad to do this, and this isn't a one-time offer. I've been doing this since nineteen ninety-eight. I wanna continue to do this on into the future. I think this is the least that, that your neighbors and local businesses can do to help their school out. And I wanna continue to do that. Do you have any questions for me about, about big neighbors up there? What could I do more to help you?
I think it's a great offer.
Guys, I've stored your wrestling mats in the past. I've stored sheds up there. Uh, I've donated that for a number of years. Of course, you're not using it anymore. Uh, I, I tried to work with the FFA and the, and the vocational act department when it was up there, uh, and, and I'm always looking for ways to help my local school and help the kids in the school. Uh, and that, and folks, that's not gonna change. But, but I wanna, I wanna be a good neighbor to you, and I want you to be a good neighbor to me.
Yeah, I haven't more time pictured in the area, but that's a solution for.
I think it'll add support to your football game.
You can hold that up. You can hold that up. You'll be able to see it.
It's about where your yellow line goes.
It is almost exactly there.
You seen, is it something, I know you can't see this picture, but.
Can I walk around there?
Sure. It's all right. If Dean gets eyes on it, I think he can understand.
What's that?
So, this is where Dr. Rob said something about, excuse me.
Okay.
Said something about parking the buses. Would that, if we did that in addition, would that give you room to get your semi kinda backed out at an angle and still get to your pole?
Oh, sure. That's, that's fine. I just, I can't have somebody sitting exactly behind it.
Yeah.
We can come out this way, but I, I'm not gonna let, let them back a, a, a truck in there not be able to see behind them with kids and everybody around. Just not gonna do it.
Well, I just didn't know if we did like you talked here, and then maybe this here too, and got your semi backed in there kinda out of the way.
Here's what I was suggesting doing is right here where this, where this yellow line is here, this is what I was going to re-rock. You could park the buses like this facing the, the highway.
You talking about both these little sections here or just?
Yes, I was gonna, I was gonna take this off and then make all that rock from here all the way to your building.
Yeah, the last one.
That's why I thought it was a good idea when you proposed that a while back.
Do we need a vote on that?
Do you want that all torn off that, like you rock it in there?
I think it's, I mean, to me, it makes sense.
I make a motion, may I, Dean, do that, of course, and thank you, Dean.
Yep.
I'll second it.
It'll, it'll be done, uh, very shortly, with the board, with the approval of the board.
I'll second.
So, we got a motion about David, seconded by Amanda. Kelly.
Yes, sir.
Ashley.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Amanda.
Yes.
Derek. Yes, myself, yes, seven oh. Thank you, Dean.
Yep, thank you, sir.
All right, I'll move this into executive session, so like to six one zero point zero two one to discuss, uh, three and thirteen.
So, the motion will go.
To include, uh, Mr. White.
I'll second it.
I think that's it.
Seconded by David. Kelly.
Yes.
Ashley. David.
Yes.
Bo.
Yes.
Amanda.
Yes.
Derek. Yes, myself, yes, seven oh. Take a quick break, and then we'll hang back here.